Okay, this is 6:30. I've called the Halifax Board Suckin Meeting to order. Uh, the meeting is being taped by Area 58 and is also being streamed out on Zoom. Um, I'm gonna start off, please, let's leave. A motion to approve the law of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, on mission, under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, so everyone had a chance to preview our meeting agenda? Any changes or additions or subtractions? Okay, this is our motion to review the agenda. So, hold on, just a second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyauns? Okay, uh, first up, we have our regular session, meeting that's May 25th, 2021. Hold on just a minute. For a second. Action, three second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Uh, executive session, the 9:00 PM session. Will we need to call those?
If it's an executive session, you can still approve it, right?
Yes, yes.
Then, hold on. We have to approve it and hold it, right?
Yeah, they, 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 they want to be released.
Right, motion to approve and hold.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to approve and hold? So, move, just a second.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye? Anyauns? Okay, action?
Uh, I move to affirm the, affirm it's scruple of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant, 131, for $227,478.28. School warrant, number 132, for $340,707.45. Venda warrant, number 133, for $112,229.51. Payroll warrant, number 2, for $65,961.33. Venda warrant, number 3, for $52,565.75. The withholding warrant, number 4, for $95,744.19. And the annual commitment from 6/28 to 7/4, for $48,276.85.
One second, those. Okay, is there any discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, so two, zero, one passes.
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Venda warrant, number 134, for $93,326.65. Payroll warrant, number 135, for $3,843.32. School warrant, number 136, for $4,069.52. Venda warrant, for $1,348,626.33. And the mobile park fee, number 7, for $5,160.
Second, those. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I abstain, two, zero, one passes.
Then, I move to approve payment of the following selectmen bill dated July 13, 2021. Uh, we have a law bill for KP Law, for $1,905.70. A law bill for Relax, uh, for $72.10. A law bill for Attorney Lawrence Mayo. I'm gonna go with this one, I hope, let's see if that's not so. For $2,958.10. A law bill for Brooks and Durances, for $1,412.64. A law bill for Michael G. Gilman Esquire, for $3,865. A law bill for William August Esquire, $570. Dispatch services for the town of Duxbury, for $150,000. Insurance for Sheldonson, uh, $39,828. Another insurance.
Is that all of the law bills?
Yeah, hold on. Yes.
You wanna approve the law bills, like you were saying from those?
And then, yeah, okay, so, I'll, and so, William August Esquire.
Just a second, just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, two, zero, one.
I'm gonna start over with the dispatch.
You want dispatch yet?
Alright, so, dispatch for the town of Duxbury, $150,000. Insurance for Sheldonson, $39,828. Insurance for Sherry Direct, $600. Audit for Powers &amp; Sullivan, for $9,000. Selectment expense account, for an annual due, $181.88. Selectment expense for Massachusetts Municipal Association, $40. Another part of expense for Massachusetts Municipal Association, for $1,080. NBI music license, licensing, for $368.
One second, those. Any problems in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright. Up next. We have the mail that was received.
Um, let's see, first one, is there a later appointment, and second later appointment. And we have a list of the special police officers and permanent minutes should be equated as licensing authorities. To open the agenda, and we've been... Just to remind the motion to appoint the specials and permanent minutes.
No, you did that already.
Did for the permanent full time.
Okay.
Um, she gives a five list because there was questions when these ones were also licensing agents and the law.
Okay.
All those.
Just a second.
Second.
I'm gonna abstain from Mr. Ganos because of the lawsuit. So... For just a second, do you wanna just, all those, you wanna just move? Move everybody but Burke, move everybody but Burke, is that right? Alright, is there a motion? Everyone but Burke? Just a second.
Why you not Burke?
Because I have a...
We're gonna vote on him after he's abstaining, so we're voting on everybody but Burke, and then you and I will vote on Burke.
One second, those.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyauns?
I make a motion to appoint Robert Gainer for licensing authority.
Second.
Pervuse.
Well, you didn't ask for all of them.
Yeah, I'm gonna reduce them once I show you.
Okay, so, sorry, you don't ask for all of them here?
I'm sorry.
You don't ask for all of them in favor if he's reduced?
Get up and move from the table.
Some in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Alright. She did that. Um, next, library trustees' resignation, we received an email from Paul Delaney, who resigned from the trustees as he's moved out of state. Later on tonight, we'll be on the board committee interviews. I don't know whether you wanna deal with the building, expect our funding now, and in what fashion, in terms of... You may wanna do it, it's an executive session, you may not, uh, beforehand, I don't know, whatever you wanna do this.
Well, we have to motion to let him serve as temporary, and so...
So, you guys don't do that, or reduce?
Somebody wants to make that motion for a day certain? So, uh, so, do you mind wait for...
Till, what was it, till the 20th? Uh, we don't have a meeting on the 20th.
No, but you could. I won't go to it, but you could have me.
Yeah, you have, you have to be there, don't you? Um...
Yeah, I believe that Corey mentioned that they thought it might be another week.
Yeah. Okay, so, I'll motion that. Good. Continue that, so, let's move on.
Second, is this a motion? Does everyone discuss it, or...
I have time to discuss it, aren't you doing what the judge asks?
I, I personally think that he should be reappointed. Alright, I understand, I, I'm not, I'm not on the board, so I... I'm trying to move the gears along here a little bit. So, you have a motion on the floor for reappointing him to, uh, for us temporary until July 20th. It may be very wild meeting that day. It was seconded, for discussion purposes, if you're not discussing further, then you could have a vote on it. Just a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Senator De... Recycling fee and bills, I'm not expecting to avoid that day decision tonight because, um, Sandy and Susan need to provide figures and such for recycling budget and collections, but the board needs to figure it out to set the recycling fee for fiscal '22 and talk about recycling coordinator. We have to talk with the recycling coordinator, talk about the payment process. Um, in terms of timing, since we're trying to get property tax bills out no later than October 1st, we're really trying to get the recycling bills out no later than September 1st, and preferably earlier than that, July, August 15th. Um, right now, we're scheduled to two more regular meetings before then, which would be July 27th and August 10th.
But asking, I mean, both dates, because we still, we had to have that discussion, keep pushing off of cycling.
But, oh, so, off on the 27th. Uh, Traffic Safety Committee, uh, results of the meeting on July 12th, I know that Ashley is there. Um, a discussion of the townwide speed limit, signs and brush problems on Thompson Street, a possible new line of traffic safety, then also possible measures for law enforcement.
Uh, Steve said he's gonna put the, speed limits on.
What I did?
Steve said, Steve, Steve said he's gonna put a speed limits sign on on that. Um, we're working on moving the speed trap over, but right now, it's on another street, but he's gonna work on that thing next week. Um, the blind drive after the bus was cut down isn't an issue anymore, so there won't be a blind drive sign put there on Thompson. And, the only thing we're still figuring out is the responsible payment of the blinking school's speed, whether that's the town or our school. That's still a question.
Goodness, Tom, you're up, are you ready?
Sure. I think Steve, I think Steve is arguing because it's a little science specific to the school, speed area, that it should be a school responsibility, not a highway responsibility.
So, the school doesn't have any other signs to maintain?
Right.
It makes absolutely no sense to have a school maintain a sign?
It's also on a town road within the town highway. Me, I think Steve wants, simply wants to make sure that if you're sort of a continued responsible for replacing the maintenance and payment for, and more of the signs, there's be a separate line item for Thompson. I think the safety committee mentioned yesterday was maybe establishing a new line item for those measures. It could still be, but they would still, bills would still be paid for the highway side, or like, it could be, so, especially that. Maybe this, it's not very specific.
Yes.
They, there's a word, any questions about anything? So, just going to townwide speed limit, you would need a special act of legislation more than likely. It can't be brought back to a special town meeting this fall, but you need to figure out what you wanted action to be as part of that. You don't have to do that to that.
That, that failed previously at that point.
So, you don't have to wait two years, or anything like that, if that's only for zoning issues.
Okay.
You've got a 645, I believe, a 645. Um, yeah, Mr. Nixon?
Here. You wanna come up to the table, sir?
Sure.
So, the microphones are not a TA system, they're part of the Area 58 auditorium, so you do need to get into the mic when you're speaking, but also recognize the rest of the room has to be able to hear you also.
Sure. There's, there's one mic that the light doesn't work, but it's working.
Yeah, so, I think you can't hear on Zoom, so, don't, you know, it's hard to hear, Charlie's kind of gone to, I don't know. Almost there with Gordon.
Oh, move the mics closer, yes.
There's one that hasn't, the light hasn't been working, but it always works.
Yes, your one, okay, alright.
Can we switch it out?
Yeah.
I agree here.
But two reasons. I think it's close. So, go ahead, Mr. explain, you're here for having, getting a temporary local license for several dates over at Fieldstone Farms, some of the horse shows?
Yeah, the folks at the Fieldstone Show Park put on the horse shows, I guess, every year, I'm not that familiar with their business, but they, uh, emailed me to see if my brewery, see if me and my brewery are interested in, uh, doing beer service for them during some of the shows this, this summer and to the fall. And, uh, sounds like a good opportunity for us. Um, so, I said, sure, let's do it, and I know part of the process is getting the one day permit for, uh, through the town, so we applied for the permit, and you guys invited us to come to the meeting, so, I'm not sure what else you might need.
Could be riding horses, don't?
I don't know. I wouldn't think that'd be a very good idea, but, uh, I think it's more for the, the audience than the, uh, participants, I would assume, but I have not been there yet myself.
Are you, your own staff, that's Service Safe certified, and you're also...
Uh, ServSafe wouldn't really be terribly applicable, I am ServSafe certified, more the tip certification for, uh, on-premise consumption, and, uh, there will certainly be someone, probably me, that is tip certified there whenever we're served.
So, what are the hours to be in the service, on the draw, AKA, or service end?
I think, um, if it's not in the permit, I believe we're going 12 to about 5 or 6?
I think 12 to 8.
12 to 8?
Yeah. Doesn't look as under application.
Yes, okay, thank you for reminding me.
Do you do beer and wine also, or wine, or maybe service?
We just make beer, I could purchase wine from a local winery, because I'm sure some, some of the crowd would probably want that option. Uh, we do beer and kombucha, both alcoholic and non-alcoholic kombucha, um, so we have that for sure, and I may purchase, um, from a local winery, some, some wine as well.
Yeah, does it get any food served?
Uh, not by us, but I do believe they have food vendors.
I have other questions, but some, you can't answer that.
What's that?
I have other questions, but we asked the young fieldstone, so... Did they give you certain dates that would win you another time?
Yes, we're, um, aiming for the 21st and 22nd of August, that's a Saturday, Sunday. Then, Friday, Saturday following is the 27th and 28th. And then, uh, let's get ahead, it's September 11th and 12th is the Saturday and Sunday.
I'm gonna do a very, it's coming, three days?
Six days, three days.
I'm sorry?
How many days do you need to go?
Uh, we have six days that we're applying for, and the government plan. For us.
Just a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, we have interviews at 7, so we need to business with that now.
Um, Zoom a question. I know there's an interest in trying, somewhat permanent basis to get higher needs set up. Um, we'll need to obviously fund, you know, certain, for that. I know that Tom Crowley mentioned last night that this company has had, so, they've had to go through that process, and he'll see if they might have some ideas. I don't know what interest the board has for putting something together, whether it's for this room, or downstairs, or both, meeting spaces, or for that matter. Probably you were wanting to the other place.
See, downstairs would be easy, because all you need is a, there's a computer with a capture card that can, that you do what I'm doing with my personal iPhone. But, up here, it would be nice if we had another device that can be plugged in, so that the other meetings can be zoomed to, without using my capture card, which I don't have. Uh, Area 58 did provide the service for, um, the select school committee meeting for the last two meetings. So, the school committee set up Google Meet, and then Area 58 provided the microphones and the mixing board and their capture card. Um, but I think it's a worthwhile expense to have the meetings live for our residents. So, I would be in support of purchasing three setups for the downstairs selectmen's room, the great hall, and meeting room one. Whether or not that's...
I don't know, we, I can ask Tom and Susan to begin with, or 58, to see what they can spot. Sounds like one, uh, higher meeting room, I was at a lower meeting room, it's helpful, we can get on there. Well, yeah, but there might be other meetings here also, you may be able to move downstairs soon. But, um, as an example, for instance, even tonight, we would wanna be upstairs to be given the number of people at tonight's meeting, just for example, or this particularly last meeting for us, it's very important, all chairs.
It would be, it would also be nice if the other members of the selectmen could see the participants on soon, so whether or not we set up a projector, a screen, or...
Well, and also, to actually, in a real sense, the rest of the audience should be able to know who's there.
Right. So, I would be in support of a motion asking C-6 to look into upgrading either the Zoom count or the hardware necessary to provide streaming service for our meetings.
Second, those. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyauns?
Next in is the University of Memphis, project we're doing with 65 visits north. We are actually gonna be here next week, sort of doing interviews with the city planning board, to prove, need the board to approve and sign, of the entire board's instincts. I move to send a contract for our president, plus $33,000 to $2,000.
One second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyauns?
Um, on COVID vaccination, the state does have various programs to help residents obtain vaccine, the board of health has publicized this via Facebook and the town's website. Um, Bob, Bill, Eric, and I, Valerie and I agree, and we've talked about, with the fire chief about, that because of lower tenants, you know, the communities from the mobile bus, we, it's not necessary to bring that in here, we still think there are enough people who would be using it to make sense to bring that. But, um, there's that home service, there are regional facilities still, um, Kingston's gonna be running, um, a couple of dates, July later this month, a couple of days in August. There's obviously a database on the town's website, on the state website, for people being able to get to, um, venues without maintenance. We're at about average for Plymouth County in terms of our vaccination rates. Few communities are doing better, probably more than more than here, and our area communities were about average. Um, you could do better, obviously, more so with the younger groups of residents, which, uh, 12 to 40, for instance. But, we're hoping that people get the vaccine simply because the cases are going back up again in Massachusetts, not as bad as the deep south, but it is noticeable that we've declined, and we have, we're number of winks is ended, and we're back on the elsewhere again, with the Delta area. So, certainly, we would urge people to get the vaccine, protect them and their friends and family. Um, on the, yeah, go ahead.
Can we request, when the Kingston, uh, dates take place, that we use the reverse 911 for the Halifax residents?
Sure.
That way, they're alerted to it?
Mm-hmm. Um, offer money, uh, Booth County's gonna hold a Zoom call on Thursday about its project to distribute the money to 25 communities in Plymouth County, outside of Rockhampton, they hit their own sucker stream because of the size of the communities. As far as I know, it should be a simple pass for not like the CARES Act money, but I'll find out more on Thursday. For right now, I'm assuming the town's gonna be receiving the 2.3 million dollars, that's money coming straight to the town, plus the money coming through Plymouth County. Other money can be used in several categories, including replacement of revenue loss. Basically, the Fed has said, look at what your revenue stream was like during fiscal '15 through '18, and then reject what you thought was going to be for fiscal '17, and four years after that, based on the average increases during those years. And if it's below, if it was below 4.1%, you use 4.1%. So, Sandy and I went through the numbers, uh, and worked out that for the 18-month period, July 1st of 19, and December 31st of 2020, we apparently collected about $600,000 less than we would have anticipated under what we would assume would be normal circumstances. The, so that, ah, that 2.3, 600,000 can be in this pot over here, and it's important, that pot of money can basically be used for any governmental program or service. It does, it's not limited to the categories of COVID, or doing broadband water, ceiling, infrastructure, and such. It can be used by pencils, it can be used by police cars, it can be used by higher people on a temporary basis, all those are possibilities.
So, with that in mind, I'd like to see that our data specialist that we have working for us gets added 15 hours a week. So that he can actually, he's taken on more responsibility, he has been basically just responding to incidents and emergencies, and there's not enough time in the week with his hours to accomplish the tasks that he needs to get done. So, I'd like to see us use some of that money to provide 15 hours additional to him for the next year.
Shall we, the term of the program is between here? Yes, that, I believe, I don't know if it's June 30th or September 30th of 2024, we'll have to spend all the money. So, it's a three-year stretch? Right, I mean, you can spend all of it at once, there are gonna be some communities, there are, pick one particular project, let's say water infrastructure. Let's say, the whole check, all of it is going to that thing, they're gonna spend it, you know, within a, let's say, 12 months or something, there's nothing wrong with that. Um, it's, and each individual community's gotta be making its decisions on how to spend the money and when to spend it, like. The, one of the things on revenue loss is that the limit is at 2.3, we're not gonna get any more money out except for that. So, if we had a revenue loss in January 1st of 2021 to December 31st of 2021, another, let's say, $100,000 of it could be used in that category around one of the limited categories. But, if you've got projects in the limited categories, there's nothing stopping you, and string those, not me now, this is once we get it. Um, we've got about 425 so far, straight through the feds, state, all those categories. But, you can spend on other things as the assortment is proposed right now. Second move, fifteen hours of your camera.
Sure.
He's second.
Second move. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
What I'll do is for the twenty-seventh, an actual number of the city, so you'll have an action, because I think you're appropriate to get your actual money. Just one point, it's your decision to make on all this. This is not going to town meeting, creating these decisions. Doesn't mean the public can't provide any for it. But the decisions were made by the executive authority rather than legislative authority. Well, we're at seven.
We're at seven. So we have appointments now. Susan Hill here?
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Hill. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Hello, Troy.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you? You're the new member. Hello. Nice to meet you too.
What major is your position?
My husband and I have been in town for twenty-six years. I grew up in Boston. I know from personal experience growing, you know, growing up in Boston in an under-deserved community, how important libraries are. When I appeared on Jeopardy last year, I hope everyone saw me. I used Google and internet somewhat to do some research for, to prepare myself for the show, but I found that Google can take you off into multiple areas where you might not want to be. And I wanted to remain focused on areas where I needed to brush up. So I immediately went to the library, took out a book on opera. Thank God I did not get that category. And a book on American history. Unfortunately, I didn't get as far enough into the American history book that might have helped me with my final Jeopardy answer on the Civil War. But I, I meant, have meant to go back to the library to see if that category, civil, the Civil War and the answer, which was Copperheads, a Democratic group that was not interested in going to war, was actually in the book that I took out. I think I would have kicked myself in the, you know what, if I had found that that answer was in the book and I just didn't get, didn't get to it. But I saw that, you know, there was an opening on the board and I thought, based on my background in customer service and other things, that I would be interested in serving on this board. I'm also kind of concerned about the situation in the country where people are trying to censor people for their views, both on the left and the right. And I think, you know, I would like to stand up and say, you know, we may not agree with what's in this book, but it's important to have this book available.
Have you attended any of the meetings for the library trustees?
I have not, no.
Town meeting?
Town meeting, yes. Probably not every year, but at least every couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have just one question. Okay, next up we have Christine Boils. Miss Boils, all right.
Hello. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Board Member.
Hi, Megan. Good evening.
Troy, you want to start off? Same question. What, what brought your interest in this business?
Well, I am a long-time library advocate. I just moved into town last November. I was a high school educator for close to thirty years in the area. And I moved from Clinton. My husband and I sold our home there for thirty years to our daughter and her family, and we moved next door to Halifax. I was a member of the Clinton Board of Library Trustees for eighteen years. I switched careers from a second actor. I left teaching and I'm actually currently employed at Plymouth Public Library. So I'm a, I'm a long-time trustee, new to town. But because I moved out of town, I had to resign my post in Clinton and libraries are something that are, you know, has always been a very important thing in my life. And again, it's a, a great pillar of democracy. It's a place where there's equal access to everyone for all resources and just wanted to become involved in my new town.
Sounds like you're really busy. Do you have time to attend on your board?
I, I did it in Clinton. My, one of my father's old sayings was, if you want something done, ask a busy person. So being busy is something I'm pretty accustomed to.
Yeah, you're good. Ashley?
I imagine when you're in Clinton, did you attend town meetings? Because I know you-
Yes. I, I did more so in my earlier years in town and it was more difficult later on to, to get there at night if it, you know, conflicted with work schedule, but yes.
No, thank you guys. Couple of questions that could be asked. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm not sure if the board was intending to take any votes tonight. With the library, it's a joint vote of the library trustees. And I don't believe they were posted for tonight, so I don't think they're going to do that tonight.
Okay.
Again, get everybody on the schedule for the twenty-seventh.
Thank you both for coming in. And where it's a joint meeting with the library trustees, if you could arrange to interview with them.
So maybe here you're at.
Sorry, what do you want to do, sir?
When's the next library trustees meeting?
I'm, we're meeting until August tenth. And I think, I, I must have messed up on that. Although I, I didn't know the whole procedure. I felt the procedure was new and that this laptop was just going to appoint people. So I didn't post this. I did let them know and I didn't get any response. So, but I didn't push it after that. So those probably might be that they don't get.
Okay.
Okay, they'll, they'll also be able to watch the meeting on YouTube.
Okay.
Once it's posted.
Do you want, um, do you want to work with Jean, see if we can set, if they're going to come in on the twenty-seventh, or do we need to-
Sure.
Hold up.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Okay. Up next is Kim Kibachi for conservation.
Good to see you, Sarah.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Good.
Good. Want to tell us about you yourself and why you're on conservation?
I've been an associate member of conservation for approximately three months already. The board felt that I'd make a great full-time member, so they asked me if I'd like to step up. And I agreed to do that. I've been on multiple site visits as an associate member. I've attended the last six meetings. We have quite a good agenda tonight. And we're just excited to be on the board and learn new things and it's such a great group of people.
So maybe Charlie has anything for the associate members?
Do not vote. They're simply, they're, they're helpers in essence. They can, they can attend meetings, they can discuss things, they just don't have to vote.
But where, where's the board of selectmen in that?
The conservation commission makes the decision about associate members, not the board.
Okay.
It's not the same situation as it is, for instance, for the ZBA, where the alternate member votes in case more of the members of the ZBA can't vote or are not there, they can participate in discussions, but they're appointed by the board selectmen, or it's a common, the associate member can't vote, but is appointed by the common.
Can't vote.
Can you start running any other boards right now?
No.
You're attending town meetings?
Yes.
No, I think you're very interesting.
Thank you very much. It's nice to have somebody in the ring.
Question is, you can associate member for how long?
Approximately three months. And then we had an opening.
And do conservation commission members have jobs for that?
Yes, they, I believe they wrote a letter over to Charlie.
But you have a copy in your files recommending that you be appointed as a full member.
So the question I have, and I guess that's really more for the conservation board and not you, Kim, is where is that advertisement for that position? How is that process being handled for associate members?
For which?
For conservation, how's that, how's that being handled? Because I don't remember us actively posting, searching for people and, and doing that.
I'd have to go back. I mean, basically, when the board had instructed me was about a month and a half ago to put out basically as much publicity about all positions that people could apply for any. And you had, in fact, a member leaving the commission to decide that to ask you to reappoint. So the publicity for that was the same as for many of the other positions you reported. In fact, I believe you did interview people. This helps for weeks since that for the conservation commission.
Right. It's not so much about the, our appointment. It's the, the associate members and how that process works.
If we got talent base forms and such, you refer to the conservation commission.
I, I know that my talent platform, I use my old one from two thousand and eighteen or so. And both Terry and Charlie asked me if I was still attached there. And I was voted in as associate member because Colleen was already an associate member and to step her out first because she had been there longer. And I believe that Terry still has multiple applications. She was just waiting to see who the next full-time member would be to do associate members for that.
Okay. Sorry, not really. You are-
No, that's okay. But I'd like to know the process too, especially being a new full-time member. To make sure going forward that there aren't any concerns or questions about it.
Yeah.
I would hope that you appoint. Kim, thank you to the conservation commission as a full-time member.
That's good.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. Okay. Thank you, Kim.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes, have a good night.
Okay, I'm going to ask Jean to come up now.
Hi.
Push this a little bit, especially with the mask.
Just speak about what we're-
So I think we all know the answers to the average questions. Do you have the time?
Yes. Do I, oh, do I have the time to do this? Yes, I have thought about that a lot. And I had asked Joe Schofield and she said they meet once a month for about an hour. And the way I feel about having the time is I would make the time for something like this because when I was hired as the library director in two thousand sixteen, one of my goals and one of my priorities every year that I have my review is to form a good collaboration with the COA. And up until this point, it hasn't been easy. But in most communities, the library and the COA work together. As far as, you know, I've done a lot of research on, and this is part of my regular work as the library director, but a lot of research on, you know, dementia-friendly communities and memory cafes and things like that. Like our patrons are their patrons. So we cross paths a lot. So it would really just be that hour of the extra meeting. Most of it would be, most of the other time I devote to that would be devoted to collaborating with the COA. You know, it wasn't easy when I first started in two thousand sixteen. And then we went, you know, through that, all that kind of like, I don't want to say turmoil, but there was a lot going on. And now I have to, you know, commend you guys. But I've been down. She's great. I've met her a couple of times. And I think she's going to be a great addition to the community. And I look forward to working with her.
You said two thousand sixteen?
I was hired as a library director in two thousand sixteen. I was hired at the library in nineteen ninety-nine?
And you've attended a couple of lately meetings before?
I have not because they're board meetings. I have attended their generation meetings, which are, I've actually done some work for generations, making their flyers and things like that. And I have a good relationship with that group, which is really like their friends group. But a board meeting, I didn't think anybody could just attend. I thought it was just like a board meeting.
Ashley? Second motion? Your motion to a-
Motion to appoint Jean to the council meetings.
Second? Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
C9, thank you.
Thank you.
Does that give you a full board now?
Yes, actually, it, um, for a single person, and especially in these days, a collaboration as such with the library is going to bring a lot of support to the community as well here in the region. So I'm looking forward to having Jean on board. I'm pretty excited that she came forward. And today, we really need to find support in the community with everyone. It's, it's just really important. So she's going to be a great asset.
Right. You'll introduce yourself.
Yes, good. I'm the new director for the council meeting. My name is Darwin Reagan. And I am pleased to be part of the Halifax community. And I'm hoping that we, you know, I can provide not only the senior community as well as, you know, all the cases in our community, but a lot of the community available to them at the state level. And so that's what my connection will be to having the library as an access point to grow our community as well here. And I'm going to enjoy working with her and working with everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll keep myself to the next one.
So we're going to go to the hill. Daniel, sorry. Can you be now? You're an associate of us for the last five years. Have you seen any of the conversations about any of the going on?
Could you repeat that for me?
You involved, I know you can't vote, but you involved in discussions.
At, at times I can vote when one of the full members does not, does not attend a meeting. And I have been to all the previous meetings on certain petition. I am able to vote.
And members, have you spoke to members of the board?
In, in what capacity?
Since this was not to support you and not to consult you. Would I not be support you?
Um, no. One of them said that they would support, you know, they, they thought it was a good idea. You know, we're all kind of perplexed why, well, I'm, I shouldn't vote, whereas another, you know, I'm, I'm wondering why Bird Gana wasn't reappointed. I mean, he's the best Halifax I ever offered in any appointed or elected position. But if it's not going to be Bird- But if it's not going to be Bird, I think the most logical thing for the town and the most logical thing for me to keep serving for the town would now fill that possibly vacant full member position.
What's your experience of the time you've been as associate with?
My personal experience?
Yep.
I was a toolmaker for 35 years. I owned my own machine shop. I directed choirs for many years of churches. I'm a reserve deputy sheriff for the Coth County Sheriff's Department. I'm a licensed active real estate agent. I own an apartment building. Put a lot of concrete in my life. Done a lot of things.
What's the process on appointing associates?
You do, ZBAs appoint associates.
How often?
When you have vacancies.
The holding of your vacancies.
Right, because I believe we have, since there's, I believe, just one associate member along with five regulars. So if we had a vacancy on the associate, we'd be going through the same process. People who were interested in serving even on that limited capacity could apply or the board got a tap in, then we're pending the board to appoint somewhere.
So you're pretty up to date with our dialogues and reading them and following them?
Yeah, it's, it's a board that you really need to put time and effort into. And, you know, the ZBA is a semi-judicial board. You know, a lot of times we have to make judgment calls on a variance of a special permit. I think sometimes people don't realize this, that we don't create the zoning bylaws. They're voted in by the residents. And our job is to follow those. And sometimes I feel like there's a misrepresentation out there that, you know, we're doing somebody a favor or something, or something of that nature, and that's not the case. Sometimes we're compelled by the bylaw to say no because, let's say, a used variance, you can't do that. But other times, somebody might be asking for a variance for, let's say they want to share closer to the property than what's allowed or part of their home. So our job, and now that's not compelled. Now, we're mandated by the bylaw to take all that information in to see if that doesn't take away from the neighborhood, if it is in line with the spirit of the bylaw. And that's part of what we do is we make judgments. And we may hand out a variance or a special permit depending on the circumstance. My own personal feeling, I think, is in line with case law, which, don't ask me to cite the cases because I don't have those memorized, but case law says you should hand out variances sparingly. That's my own personal view. I don't know what the other board members' views are or things like that. But it's a great board. I enjoy it very much. What you see in the meeting is what you get. You know, there's five other, I can't speak for myself, but there's five other great guys on the board. Well, Bird isn't on the board, he hasn't been reappointed yet. The reason I applied is because that would be the next logical step for me. I think the best decision for the town is to reappoint Bird Gainer. He has impeccable, he's impeccable character and he's tremendous knowledge. And what you see is what you get. And, you know, I hope that every other board in town is like the ZBA is.
So to touch a little bit on what you just said. So sometimes you have to make decisions based on what you feel violates. So you feel like the zoning board very clearly does what they do for another tenant?
Well, I call balls of strength. Okay? If it's, you can't, let's take like a variance. You can't create, a variance can be given if there's shown to be a hardship. But you can't create your own hardship. So if there's a hardship that was created, let's say financial or topography or social conditions, and it wasn't of your doing, then we can look at hitting other variances. At that point, myself and I think the other board members would say, okay, somebody's asking to be, let's say, closer to the border than what they should be, just for an easy example, to the boundary line. Well, now you take, now you take into consideration, what does the neighborhood look like? Does granting this variance hold with the intent of the bylaw? So those are the types of things you look at, and sometimes yes, and sometimes no. And that's just one of the choices you make. The same thing happens with special permits. You know, you have to say, is this going to take away or add to or keep the same tenor and the neighborhood?
How long has this board been the same? You've been associate for five years, so I'd imagine there hasn't been any member changes?
No, not since I was on.
Do the research.
What about things that I've heard the board say that they just do because it's something that you guys have decided to do? Like three or six feet openings and things like that when it comes to, I don't know, in-laws? And maybe it's not a bylaw, but you let some people have a three-foot opening and some people have six. Would that be doing the same for all of our lives?
Well, there are some people that come to us that are, I'm going to get this wrong. Not renewed, but reviewed, now we review in-laws. Some people might have had an in-law apartment that was like that. And somebody might be going for one that was new. So you might have a little difference there.
So you feel strongly that you as a member, not the board, I'm not asking how you feel about the board, but you, if you were to serve as a full-time member, could make a fair judgment call to follow our bylaws for every single resident in the town, not just second individuals?
Yeah, well, absolutely. And I think I can answer for everybody. I know, I'm there, and I'm telling you, I'm looking you in the eye, and I'm telling you, that's what everybody does. Okay? What you see at that meeting is what you get.
Have you gone to every meeting?
No, I don't think anybody's gone to every meeting.
I mean, more than not as an associate? Or do you just go when you know they're not going to have?
No, no, I try to go as much as I can. I do work a lot of nights, and probably missed a couple in the past year.
Apparently, they meet once a month. Obviously, I've been doing Zoom, and it's been the vast majority of those meetings since they are, since the pandemic started.
Is Zoom a second meeting? Do you go to that?
Yeah, but it was the same before.
Give it a minute.
Oh, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Support may make a motion concerning benefits here. Do you want to move on to the next interview?
Go on to the next interview.
So I sent a note in late this afternoon saying she wasn't going to be available tonight or for the 27th. They said, I know, you're on for the IAS. So your next interview is with Tyler Wicker. Tyler's here?
It is 7:30, and we have our next appointment, Casey Sims.
I have to turn this to you. I'm a water girl.
So you're here for issues with the Halifax water system?
Yes. And I'm still 7:30, so I'm in the middle of my interview, so. Breaking it up?
You're it.
All right. So I have been living in Halifax my entire life, down at Lyden Lane for 27 years, I think. And then I moved up for a little bit down to Elm Street for another three years and back to Lyden Lane. So I'm just going to read a letter that I sent two to the water department. One back at the last time they collected our water bills and the most recent one. So this is made for, "To whom it may concern, I am requesting an abatement of $6,453, half of my bill, as the water department has not held up to the standard of providing my household with reliably good water. The water department is a public water supply and has done little to provide a better quality of water to my household. Unfortunately, having tinted water has become quite normal in my home, and on numerous occasions, it has been completely brown. Both cold water from the pools outside and cold and hot water in the house. My four-year-old son says it looks like Coca-Cola and asks if he needs to go in it. I have been told by the water department to let the water run to clear it up. When I am instructed to let the water run, I do not think I should be expected to pay for filling and dumping water repeatedly if this is how the town is choosing to solve the problem. It continues to ruin clothes. My tub is always stained. I must buy extra cleaning products and I must buy cases and cases of water as a brick filter does not solve this problem. I understand that the town and the condos continuously play a blame game with one another. But it also is my understanding that the town must have approved the distribution system way back when the condos were built, which means the town thinks they can supply me with clean water. The quality of the town water is disappointing, not good enough for my son to drink, play, or bathe in. I am currently running for the condo ward, and if and when I'm elected, this will be on the top of my agenda. I have attached pictures which were taken on multiple dates. Thank you for your consideration." I have the pictures, and these are all from over the last year. June 12th, I emailed the water department and asked if they received my request for abatement. I didn't get an answer. June 16th, same thing, did not get an answer. So finally, I reached out to Mrs. Ducci, and then I really got a response from the water department. They said that a letter was mailed to me, but they denied my request, which I never received. And here I am, I paid my bill. And I just think it's time to talk about it. It's all over Facebook, and I just think somebody needs to actually talk about it.
So how do you water manage your trajectory?
Yes, till Lindsay started, I think the first, beginning of the first week of July. She's been here for approximately.
And when we reached out to him, they weren't opposed to a meeting, they just wanted to.
No, I think they wanted to give him a little more time to enable the water system. I know that they weren't able to come in tonight. They may be able to come in another slot or two.
Charlie, I actually did. I showed up tonight, so she asked questions.
Okay.
Would you like to see the pictures?
Yeah, yes.
What are we going, sorry? What role are we going to be?
So I think we're being, allowing the public to participate in our meeting, letting us know that they're unhappy with the quality of the water. And that she's gone to the water department, she hasn't got the results that she wanted. She's bringing that forward before us. I don't think it's fair to have the newest superintendent of the water try to answer questions on how bad the infrastructure is unless you're ready to speak to it, sir. It's really the water commissioners that should be before you answering questions on.
And part of the problem that I have with this decision is that they just made the decision and wanted me to let me know, or they thought that they let me know. And then, no reasons as to why. Like, if you look at the pictures of my water, it's disgusting. And it's not always, it's not always like this. But when you look at it, you wouldn't drink it. So why do I need to pay for the water that I have to dump out in cases for my fish tank and to drink and extra cleaning products? It's just, I feel like this is the town's job to supply us with clean water that I'm paying for. And it's gross.
I think we should give them the board members a word of mercy. We're proceeding through.
Yes, but, okay. So these cards are from, oh, this is a couple of samples. So these are all from last year. And on different occasions.
So what are we allowed to do? What types of action, what type of, obviously, just needs to be addressed?
So I think we invite the water commissioners to come to the next meeting, have, continue the discussion. I think that, you know, Ms. Sims asking these questions, she's not getting any action back nor put on the agenda for their meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to know what is going to be done to fix it? And is it safe? Years and years of this, is this safe to? I mean, you do kind of drink it sometimes, but it's on your skin every day. And is it safe for my kid?
I would motion to put on the agenda and have a committee for the three sub of the next meeting?
Yes, I would also have the other board come in. So the helpful, sure. We'll get a time set up. We have a couple of agenda appointments already. The board wanted to have department meetings also, so we'll get everybody fit in.
I would also make a copy for the water department to have.
They have.
Okay, so that they can see the issue. But it is, you're ringing up because I totally understand the point that you're getting water that's unusable. They're telling you to dump it out, and then they're telling you to pay, to pay more for that.
And in one of those pictures, there's two pools, and that's a combined total of 614 gallons. And they're all brown. It's a lot of water.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't.
So.
Sorry, I can't.
Oh, I am happy to be the person to speak up about it.
So Troy asked for the board of health to come to that meeting as well as the water commissioners?
Yep.
No, I mean, no.
So if they're not available for our next meeting, can we have a special meeting? Just to discuss the issue in itself? Because I think it is a town-wide issue that needs to be at least explained, what's going on with the water system and what the resolution is and what the time period is for a solution. All right, next up.
Do you have a second?
Uh.
No, do you want a second?
No, I gave my motion to put down some of the board questions.
Did you amend it to have the board help?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right, so according to the agenda, we did ARPA. We have discussion and possible decision date for a special time meeting in September.
So we know at the very base we're going to have at least one zoning bylaw article because of the petition article, we need to be able to show the light before the tax rate gets set. And we need, so therefore, we need to have a special town meeting early in September, after vacation, and so the parents are back, but early enough in the month so that we go through the steps of getting the tax rate set and the tax bill sent out by October 1st. Sometimes we've met the Tuesday after Labor Day, that happens to be religious holiday. That holiday ends at sundown on Wednesday. So my recommendation would be to hold this special town meeting now Wednesday, September 8th, on Tuesday, September 7th.
Hoping the warrants tonight can connect with the doctor if he is sent.
Well, they're closing, yeah. Close the, yeah. Yeah, have the deadline for any articles to be submitted in the August tab. That's a night of award giving, so you'll have. That's a night of award giving, so you'll have a full list of articles to be put along the warrant when you meet that night.
Move the hat to set the date, August tenth is the deadline?
September eighteenth. The town meeting, they cut off the, just too many hours, August tenth.
With the town meeting being September eighth.
So has the planning board scheduled their...
Their meeting on Thursday that is on their agenda for discussion about setting a date for the public hearing on that zoning bylaw article. We may be getting a second one on a totally different subject. I'm trying, is there a question about in terms of the zoning bylaws? The general laws allow people to propose changes in the zoning bylaws as a landowner. But it also allows it obviously by petition. The question is, is sufficient to replace an award if it's simply the landowner proposing it and not by petition out? So I have a question in the town council about that. But they acknowledge that at least one article that needs to be drawn out.
I'm gonna try to limit public participation as a question.
It's just, Gwyneth, I was just gonna say, isn't that the first day of school or...
Next week or September first.
I just wanted to make sure it's the last time we meet within town far and far past the week.
Thank you. So the planning board needs to have their meeting thirty days before and they have to advertise two weeks?
No, so they, they can have their, there's a fourteen-day window in which between the meeting, the hearing, the town meeting, they should do a recommendation during that time. They should therefore at least have the hearing at least two weeks in advance of the town meeting. They'll have to advertise as we mentioned, but it's a two-week advertisement period.
So for them to have it on the twenty-sixth, everything, so as long as we close the mark by the tenth, they should have...
If they, if they would, you know, they just need to do the proper logistics to get a hearing set off within those four weeks.
But it's, so they have to advertise for two weeks. They need to, at their meeting, on the fifth, they're gonna have to vote?
They could have a meeting late in August.
No, I'm just, for logistical purposes, they, they need to have their ad in the newspaper by the thirteenth or by the twelfth, they have to advertise for two weeks. So is move seconded, all in favor of the special time meeting, aye?
Aye.
So we're gonna have the mark items that you have at the next meeting?
Sure. Comcast cable license, they sent in the formal request for commencement and negotiations, but a new license, no actions needed right now, but one of the board members know about that since that's one of the specimen process and our council for our cable contract to August has been notified. Police chief's contract, we have two copies, two some of that.
Need a motion to sign?
Yeah, you, you just physically need to sign it.
Okay, okay.
Next after that is Shanghai Secretary Mark Braskin. The zoning bylaw review, the talks are being done through the finance committee, but the board has to sign all contracts, so it needs the board's approval also.
I haven't had a chance to review that, but I've attended two of the meetings with the finance committee and we don't have really the group that I think we need running when it comes to zoning. We need participants from the planning board, we need participants from the zoning board, from the board of health. The finance committee is not really the group that should be running zoning issues. They don't have any of the land use decisions for them.
I agree that we talked about that last night at the meeting and you were going to reach out for them and going to have them sent to the next meeting for, for...
Well, yeah, just as I, kind of, once I had the material for last night's meeting, it's out the avenues and we're doing the same thing for the other process.
So do you make sure to, that what they were going over in the meeting, that they all have the copy of the sheet that you could send to everybody?
I did send out the exact material without Mark Braskin's name.
So planning and zoning, which are...
Sent to the avenues to send out.
Thank you.
So I'd like to review the contract before we sign it. So can we add that to the agenda for the next meeting?
We had received a number of complaints, the board had wanted to check with our new town council whether they were prepared to investigate them. They received a note from Paul Varensis, our town council, that they have a labor attorney on staff who would be able to do so. Do you want me to refer this to the, to the attorney for Brooks Ruses for that?
So is there a motion?
Jack Dolan of that firm.
A motion to refer the complaints to that council, Brooks and Varensis?
Our motion to refer the complaints to Jack Dolan at Preston Drive.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. So we have Mr. and Mrs. Gibbons, seven forty-five. Good evening. How are you guys doing? So, you guys wanted to talk to us tonight?
Uh, yeah.
On property?
Essentially, it's cost us approximately forty-three hundred dollars to get a permit for a wood stove. That's, 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 that's enough, really, that's the, it's pretty much the whole of it.
I'm sorry, what was this for?
We applied...
For a wood stove, right?
For a permit for a wood stove and it's, it's cost us a running total to date, approximately forty-three hundred dollars and some change to, to mainly get a permit for a wood stove.
Do you wanna go into why and that and that?
Essentially, there was a mistake made, misunderstanding during, geez, how do I say this?
So...
Well...
So if you, if you guys are gonna make your complaints about an individual, that person should be here.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid naming anybody in particular, if that's possible. So I'd rather talk about the what than the who, if, if that's...
If you're gonna, if you're gonna talk about the who?
I'm gonna do my best to avoid saying the who, if that's...
And I'm gonna recuse myself, just from that. Only because it's, I, I think it was only everybody in class on that.
Well, you gotta hold up, no, sir.
Well, that's why I was asking.
I don't, I don't think I should be here.
Let me explain what's happening. There are various suits going on between the current building inspector and members of the board.
Okay.
There, so the problem is that they have real or potential conflicts of interest. That's problem one. Problem two, could, could, like to sleep, I'm not saying kids talk, I mean, it's not gonna be up to the board.
Sorry, I'm just trying, I'm...
You know, I understand. So, for instance, when you, the only word I had available for your agreement with the board was hardship. It was not, I had emailed...
Forty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing whether you have one or not. I'm simply saying, we have an open meeting law. It requires on the agenda to say specifically what the discussion's going to be about. And that's why I asked, it's like I say, so is there information about the hardship? Is it property taxes, or is it water bills? And I didn't hear, I also wrote to you all, when we were trying to get the agenda set up, about what it was specific, so we can put something specific in the agenda. So if it was, here's our situation about wood stove, it's cost us money, I could probably write something into the agenda that said it's a complaint about somebody or it's a complaint about this process or it's a complaint about a decision or something and then it would be part of the open meeting agenda and anybody who was interested would be informed about it. But hardship didn't define anything.
Sure, I mean, define...
Well, it, it's a hardship specifically because of what?
So you're having a financial hardship or...
We're having a financial hardship based on, uh...
The town, what are you trespassing on? Right, but we can't talk about that because we haven't informed those employees that they're going to be spoken about tonight?
I don't, I guess I didn't. I suppose I should have assumed it would be necessary to speak about them, I was hoping it wouldn't. I find it interesting that, you know, we're here to complain about somebody and nobody can hear because there, he's, it's obviously a problem, we didn't even have to say who it was.
Well, because it's on the public record, because you've already, you, you attended the ZDA meeting last night.
Yep.
Okay, so...
So it's obvious what the problem is, we just can't talk about it because...
I would just suggest at the moment that we push this to the twenty-seventh. I think we'll have more information on it.
So the other end of this is that, you know, it's, it's, there's the financial aspect, but also we've been trying to get this wood stove installed since February and we're not gonna be able to get an appointment to get this thing installed into our home by the time it starts getting cold again, so we're gonna have no wood stove, so...
So that's hardship, well, that's not being able to heat our home because you can't get wood?
And then having to, I mean, we've never had to adhere for a board of four in our lives, so frankly, it's, you know, kind of stressful and we, you know, we don't understand the process and I...
No, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, but to be fair to everybody else, just as we're trying to be fair to you, everybody else needs to know that certain matters are gonna be discussed at an open meeting.
Okay, I understand this, that...
Okay, I understand that, but that same courteous wasn't extended to us when we were put on the...
That's a fair, that's a fair point to mention.
But, being told, but not being...
So now we're, we're...
This is, this is, this is not just that aspect. This is us being put on this agenda, this board is putting together several times without being notified. So we also have an issue to, like Ms. Dittick already said, that we have pending litigation individually against multiple selectmen up here.
So we have to get all those to line?
Speak to you about this right now, which means we don't have a forum to continue that pressure meeting.
And then we gotta continue that to line.
So I would suggest because we're waiting until the twentieth for answers hopefully from the boards.
But even, even without that, you know, as absurd as it sounds, the board, the individual board members can choose to recuse themselves if they wish to. They can be in the meeting room, they're just, they can't deliberate, they can be in the audience, they can be someplace else. And you can, and the board can adjourn officially while there's no board. You can speak with Mr. Darren, whatever complaints, but mind you, anybody else can be here in the room also. Then we can put it, you know, but I need, I need something to, to pre-put on the agenda so people knows if it's a complaint about a certain...
I mean, I think you've got the...
Yeah, right, if it's a complaint about an individual's...
It's not an individual, it's more of...
This, I mean, I guess it kind of does come down to it, I mean, because an individual did do something specifically wrong and then make something based on that.
Because I know, I know that several months, several months ago, you had made an appointment to meet with the board selection about this. You in fact had to buy the board a number of...
We were dissuaded for some pretty intimidating reasons, but...
Well, I can't speak to that because I don't know what your business is, but we can set it up again for the twenty-seventh and we'll go along from there. And, but as I said, however, you may or may not have all the members of the board present at the table. I don't know whether it's gonna be three, two, one. And also I can talk, in the meantime, I can talk with town council about conflict of interest involving lawsuits, involving your complaint and how best to deal with this situation.
I don't want to come to that, there is a serious issue here.
No, I'm not just, what I'm trying to do is find a way for you to speak your, what you wanna say to the board. And I also need the board not to endanger themselves by setting themselves up for a complaint with the ethics commission over conflict of interest.
I don't fully get it, but I hope, I, excuse me, I'm gonna reverse that. I get it, but I don't understand.
And I apologize that you work on an agenda in the sound of your knowledge and I will thank you for being the bigger people and you're on some way right and letting us move this to another meeting to make sure we do it correctly.
So when is that intended?
July twenty-second.
Right, I don't have a time yet because, well, as you heard earlier, the board's also made other appointments for the twenty-seventh. We gotta, again, probably by Thursday will know. We've got appointment times and I will be in touch with you.
Okay.
Unbelievable, I'm on the mail. So Country Club Estates, Chapter forty B, five, there's an update. What's happened there is the applicant has asked the zoning board of appeals to continue the hearing to November seventeenth. You may be aware that John Peck passed away earlier this year and I believe that his family and the applicants are trying to organize as to back and help them proceed under application. They want to take extra time, but also at the same time, they've sent a letter, a letter that says we're extending the time to make the decision to later, I think, even in the twenty-twenty-two at this point.
So is this time period wise, are we in jeopardy of any instructive approvals?
No, that's the whole point. As much as they're extending, they want to extend the hearing time, they're also agreeing to extend the amount of time the ZDA has to make a decision.
Okay, so last, so last night at the ZDA meeting, it came up to extend. What, is this new?
I didn't realize they had placed on the agenda for Monday, but the public hearing right now is scheduled for this Wednesday.
Okay, so they're gonna...
Not this Wednesday, sorry, next Wednesday, sorry, the twenty-first.
So they'll vote then?
They have to, how to, to extend. The last time they met on this particular matter, they said they were continuing the hearing July twenty-first. They have to meet July twenty-first, even for sixty seconds to vote, to, we agreed we're, again, moving the hearing to November. Here's a letter from the applicant agreeing to the same amount of time extending the decision time period. We might have been making sure that our attorney, May News Council, Attorney Cross is keeping on all that, she's seen all the court signs.
Mr. Peck, we were just speaking about the forty-eight and we're going, the zoning board was requested to extend to November seventeenth.
First of all, my condolences, anyone else?
Thank you.
Sorry, people, sir. Just wanted to confirm that, because you walked in, we're talking about it, that's...
That's correct.
Okay.
And this is just information for the board, the board obviously doesn't have any decision made about it. Waste Management Recycling Contract, this is the tipping fee contract where we bring our recycling to the waste management facility, I believe in Avon. In this case, it's for two copies in the chair size.
So a motion to order to approve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
The others?
Autumn Lane, Sarah Dundale of Campbell's Homes had contacted me about the next steps in releasing the main lot of Autumn Lane. I put her in touch with the planning board with suggestions on how to proceed and then there's no action from the board. At some point, this process goes through. My hope is the board's gonna be able to hold hearings before the May town meeting for acceptance as long as everything's gonna check off by the planning board, but we're not there yet. But I did notify the planning board secretary so she can be in touch with her, so what... Um, but I did notify the Planning Board Secretary, um, so she can be in touch with her, so what, so... Materials recovery facility legislation, there's proposed legislation requiring, just like the place in Avon, to provide more information about materials received, so active billing to municipalities can occur. I'll provide you with a copy of legislation. I'll bring this back to the board two weeks from now to see if the board wants to contact the delegation about its views on the legislation. Annual personnel reviews, so selectmen and agents have asked that the board set up or schedule for reviews of personnel falling under the board's jurisdiction.
What's the fact practice for who's going to be getting done?
They usually are tied into the anniversary date when they do get done.
Okay.
Is that in our... I know you emailed it to me, can you print that one again?
I don't know, but I provided, I did ask for, so there's two groups. There's the regular full-time folks, myself, the town accountant, the IT specialist, board room is not functioning, we need a direct report to it. Police chief, fire chief, building inspector, council AD director. And then also, these positions don't have steps and are protected by that section of bylaw. I'll be the assistant building inspector, seal of wasting measures, cemetery superintendent, wiring inspector, assistant wiring inspector, and others. Um, to believe that the police chief evaluates the annual control officer and now that person's conflicted by the board. So we're just, the board doesn't evaluate control officers, it's hard to...
So I think the, the board for the next meeting should come up with some goals that the board wants to see through the decisions. And then talk about it at the next meeting and then decide at what point to line up with their contracts or anniversary dates to do the evaluations and assign out one of us to do the evaluations. But I think setting goals is important so that you have something to evaluate someone else.
Why do you want just one selectman to conduct evaluations?
So...
I think that's the issue with the whole work.
So I would think if you're going to, so typically the way that we do contracts is we assign one selectman to do the negotiations. Typically that one selectman would be the person that interacted with the individual. So that's not, that's not a meeting. Typically you want to hold somebody's job evaluation and hold a meeting.
So we just need to make sure whoever is in charge of that, you don't have a conflict to make during evaluation.
Correct. All right.
Um, Silver Lake Capital Plan, board had asked to set up a date for the Selectment Plan Committee, Capital Plan Committee to represent us from Silver Lake to meet about Silver Lake's capital plan. Obviously it'd be soon later this fall.
So unless there's some change or some immediate need that they have this summer, I think it could happen in the fall to be pulled. Um, because Kingston did not vote on the tennis courts. Um, and they did discuss the, what they did to make the tennis courts the last meeting equal, hopefully for one way or the other. But the number of capital issues, I think, needs to come forward to the townspeople so that they actually know what's being discussed at Silver Lake during the sacred meetings. This is a long list of capital plan items that are being presented there, but aren't necessarily, aren't necessarily being presented to our capital planning committee here. And, uh, and I think a larger discussion needs to take place over budgeting of those items. We're, we're, we could be talking about another debt exclusion in the future, replace a bunch of items. And, and have a once a year meeting before we start talking about budgets to talk about what their needs are. Because you have a need, you talk about the budget and it's a little backwards with what we're doing with them. Because they go forward, they set their budget, and then they see how much money the town has and they're not telling the town, these are our real needs, you need to account for this in your plan of budget. So I think we need a little more communication then. Okay.
Uh, post starting step, Water Department has asked the town to start Bill Lindsay at step two. Um, any $1,025 a year upgrade 12A route at step one, $80,266. Our plans may approve this last night. They did not approve the request by the water commissioners to have him approve a 120 hours of vacation leave per year. Um, going through this, the bylaw just doesn't, is not flexible enough to allow this to happen. So it's left to the board that if it wishes to, to approve, starting, uh, rate at step two, route at step one. The finance committee, yes?
They didn't approve the actual vacation time. A lot of thought and effort into it, but we were saying you do it for one, you better do it for all and I was accommodating last night. So I would motion to agree with the finance committee to, um, start the water to, uh, sorry, I can't read it, am I right? To fill the water commissioner at step two.
Super.
Super minute at step two rather than step one, but to leave the vacation time. Oh wait.
Second, is there any further discussion? Call us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Uh, Green Earth Canvas, host community agreement. I don't know if the board wants to, or wait for the executive session and back out. If it wants to do anything, how it wants to handle this.
You guys can talk about this in there, because my father goes probably a little bit free and easy.
Do I speak on the floor?
Yes, come over.
So I'm a lawmaker, uh, most of you guys know me. I've been in this town for 27 years. I raised my family here. My mom lives in town, my brother, my nieces, nephews, my kids, raised volunteer. I, I coached Little League for five years in town. I volunteered for football, the chain gang, for football for my, my son. I volunteered for cheerleading to raise money for my son. And so we're trying to opening up a business in town. We obviously haven't got all our ducks in the row right now. We've kind of passed over without being heard. We want to be able to discuss any issues that we had with the town. Um, I just made a couple of quick notes if, uh, we get it with you. So I'm a partner for Green Earth Canvas. We want to collaborate with the town, the legal council, and negotiating the host community. Now, we negotiated a host community agreement with the town for a long time. And legal had agreed with us on that. There's actually another company in town assigned the same ACA that we did. Um, obviously we're, we're committed to pay the maximum amount allowed by law Halifax beyond that. Agreed to cover costs to mitigate land use that may arise. Uh, Green Earth takes neighbors' concerns seriously and will address all the planning board phases and processes. We are preparing to mitigate the impact the facility might have on the neighbors. And I know not everybody agrees. And we want the chance to sit in front of the boards to, um, help out any concerns from the neighbors that they have at all. Um, including not limited to traffic, lighting, fencing, trash, and loitering. We just want the ability to come in front of the town and to address any concerns. Like I said, I've been in this town for 27 years. We're looking to hire people to work for us that come from this town. We want to pay taxes to the town. I mean, this, I know there's another company that's working with you guys. They're outside of town. I'm hoping to start the business with us in town, my whole family. We have a slew of friends that we'd like to hire that are in this community right now and kind of go forward with the process. We just want to be heard. We just want to make any concerns from the neighbors, we want to be able to address them. We don't just want to, you know, not be heard. So we're hoping you guys can readdress the issue with our rate CA and kind of let us have our chance to get us out.
So you're looking to have another topic here?
Please, bro. Yes.
If you were to do that, what's the time you need? What I would recommend is made in July 29th. Your, as you've worked through tonight's agenda, you've thrown a lot of stuff in for July 27th. Is it off first day for the planning board? The planning board's not meeting that night, so there's no conflict there. You can do a separate night on the 29th, just on this one topic. That would be one possibility, or you can pick Tuesday, otherwise not, not the 20th, not next week. I think that's a little too soon. Um, but that's up to the board's call. But you can pick the first Tuesday in August for us, because also.
What, are you, can you do it there tonight? Do you prefer Tuesdays?
Go work with anything.
I'm fine with doing the first. We have a, August 2nd is a Tuesday meeting of ours as well. And it doesn't seem like we moved.
Well, the 2nd would not be a normal, you'd have a meeting the 10th and the 24th, I believe, at ours.
So we do the 2nd.
The 2nd is, might be Finance Committee, something like that, but the 2nd is Monday, I believe.
So we could do...
You could do the 3rd, that's a Tuesday, I believe.
So we could do the 3rd if you prefer the Tuesday nights.
Didn't give you your actual time?
Well, yes, that would be out of time, yes.
The time is at seven, sure?
Then I should have given enough time to let the planning board and other boards know in case they haven't come.
So on the 3rd, 7 o'clock, we have another topic here, uh, we're hoping we can come on.
We, we want to work with the town, we want to be a partnership with town, I mean, my whole family's in town.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, someone can make a motion, someone second it.
I made a motion to have a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd at 7:00 PM. Um, I'm in favor.
All right, please?
Aye.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, bro. We'll see you soon. Say, guys? Good, guys, thank you. Thank you, Cal.
Welcome. So next is, um, two properties, 715 Old Clinton Street and 27 Hillside Avenue. The board has signed by police delivery letters concerning truck cars and materials on those properties. We did receive an email from the owner of 715 Old Clinton Street. Someone, I'm not sure if the owner's here or someone who's interested is here. Um, I wonder, I don't know if he's here. That's what they said they were here for.
Yeah, but they then...
Well, so we leave. Well, I can read the letter. I think you may have copies, but let's see. Um, any change of course, this is 715 Old Clinton Street. I'm the owner of 715 Old Clinton Street in Halifax. To whom may concern the client's access, the tenant, my requests for visibility into my property, taking actions in order to raise wall 6B high in order to steer all of you and all housewives you from then into my property. Also, the Jeep in which I have been taking parts, put on my, my wife's car, in order to drive her already two-year-old somewhere safely along doing eighty hours a week of work. Sorry it's been taking you so long, but I am a father of my family and sometimes there needs precedence. Also, that my wife could go into labor any time, I'll be attaining to my new, I'll be attaining to my new child's wishes as to, as to he is giving birth at any time. I'll be conducting, consulting with my lawyers if you have any other problems, feel free to message.
And he was here earlier, but he let us know at the beginning of the meeting that she was having active contractions and was already dilating. So I'm assuming that's why he was...
That, that would be a good reason.
So it'd be a good reason, you gotta let that one go.
Quite true. Uh, do you want to just continue this to the 10th? Point out on the 27th or whatever?
If she's having contractions, probably the 10th.
Yeah.
It can be why, assume one's better. I'm not, you have my capabilities.
Uh, but what are we going to do about the other one?
Yeah.
We haven't heard anything and so 27 Hillside Avenue.
So that's the same property that...
Twenty-three years ago, I believe that, if I remember correctly, the owner said that the vehicle was there for, um, stock, not stock, or a shop?
Demolition.
Demolition, yes. It makes you really want to get the vehicle removed, but it's something else that appeared in its place now a couple of years later. We've got to complain about it, so I don't know what the board wants to do. I mean, the past, we've allowed them time to remove it, but to be started, yeah, police officers delivered it, you know? Right, and we had sent a certified letter before that, several weeks before that. Um, I had sent a regular letter a couple of weeks before that. It's probably been on it for us a cumulative couple of months at this point. Just to find out if there's... Um, it's a per day. Um, I can check and see on the bylaws, but it's, um, what we would do is usually what we do is simply, he's in vi, if he's in violation, he's in violation. And eventually we send a parking ticket, the non-criminal equivalent of a parking ticket. Um, say, say in violation on the per day fine. And then if he wants to kill it, you can kill it, um, down, but I think that should be our next move.
Would we send them, I mean, I know you already sent it, but do we send them another certified letter saying, hey, just so you know now, starting this day, you're being fined every day?
I can't.
I would just want to be clear, that's all.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get something sent out Thursday, um, but that's when the fines would start happening. We'll be giving them maybe opportunity to rectify a situation, and then we can also...
Well, I was just saying, if we give them the heads up of the fines beforehand, maybe they'll...
I don't have any problem with saying, or if you want to notify them, it's coming.
Right, right.
But if you're going to try to do that, please.
Um, I motion to send a certified letter to the owner of 27 Hillside Avenue saying that we will be starting the fine process.
On Thursday, um, July 15th.
Yes.
Violation of junk car by law. Second.
Any further discussion? All of you in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any ayes?
I'm going to read the line, I'm sure.
True.
So we have line contract, we see a expense to COA electricity for $90.03, data processing to telephone for $378.52, water supply, electricity, water work permit for $4,000, elementary school costs to special needs transfer to transportation for $28,000, selectman expense to selectman clerical $73.51 and accountant expense to accountant clerical for $19.62.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. So last up, we have consecutive session. Two road openings?
And then, uh, we apply...
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, so is there a motion to rescind board's selectment appointment of David Mason to historic commission?
So...
Second.
All of you in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint Lisa Cook to the historic board?
Yes. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Aye.
We have to keep that in mind. Can you escape to be familiar, absolutely?
Uh, okay, the road openings, um, 25 Colby?
Right, right, 25.
Who's requesting the...
Hope it's a little scarce, uh, of mass.
And that was then checked out for the...
Free for the private.
Yeah, everybody.
Yeah, I know there'll be a lot of the road opening on...
25 Colby for 25?
One second.
Yep, okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, any answers? 28 South Street, you can tell us about that. We're just not seeing it on the page. It's probably here somewhere.
It's, um, again, the council has gas and access, it's, um, 280 South Street. Everyone sign off on it.
Okay.
So move.
Sir, second?
Okay.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, any answers?
So then, you have the executive session. As far as I know, the two matters, you might have come back out, executive session, go back and, or decisions or announcements you've already done, so I don't think they could need to do that, correct?
Yes, I agree. So I motion to go into executive session.
Listen, did Rexis respond to upcoming, I'm sorry, did Paul respond to upcoming that? Did you get invited into the meeting? Or was it someone whom we talked to?
Um, no, I know he's coming to do a visit to meet some department heads on Thursday.
Okay. No.
I mean, I can, if you'd like him to come in on the 27th, I can also try to get that set up.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, so do we need to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, contracts, certainly. I don't think on any of the legal cases unless the board is something they need to discuss or know, but I would-
Yeah, I think we should go into executive session on Piccarelli versus Halifax.
Okay. So I motion to go into executive session for contact negotiations. Sergeants, patrol officers, fire, air, satellite units, unit police chief, fire chief, and all unions at the Silver Lake Regional School District and Halifax Elementary School. And the Piccarelli versus Halifax case, as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining position of the town. And we will not be coming out of executive session to discuss any other items. We will be adjourning from here.
And then you're also going in on the Piccarelli versus Halifax case as discussing strategy, despite litigation, open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
I, I look that in for any?
Sir, second? Okay, this is the road, all those in favor, management?
Yes.
Enjoying the presentation myself, yes.